Hello. Welcome to the Bothell City Council Meeting of Tuesday, June 4th. Roll call. All council members are absent except Mayor Rayum, who is absent and excused. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge a leader?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome, everyone. For the meeting agenda approval, does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Councilmember Zornz?
I would like to pull AB 19-091 and 092.
And then I need to add a five-minute exec session item pursuant to RCW 42.30.110G, real estate acquisition. It'll be five minutes with no action.
And actually, I believe that's C. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Well, that's, it says G.
Subsection C, not G.
Subsection G, uh, C. Okay. Thank you. All right. Review of public engagements. Upcoming public engagement opportunities and events. Take our community survey for the Prose Plan, Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan, available now through August at www.bothellwa.gov backslash, not splash, pros. The King County Library System's Summer Reading Program began June 1st. Check out the Bothell Library for more information on programs and events scheduled throughout the summer. Orca-to-go kiosk at City Hall, Thursday, June 13th, from 1:30 to 3:30 p.m. Get an Orca card, replace lost or stolen cards, or add value to an existing card. The kiosk will be open on the second and fourth Thursday of each month. Bothell Library, Thursday, June 20th, at 7:00 p.m., first in a four-part series on historical Bothell transportation, presented by the Bothell Historical Society. Bothell was a river city and relied on the Smamish River to travel. Learn from local experts what made Bothell unique. Waste Mobile, Friday, June 21st, and Saturday, June 22nd, from 10 until 5:00 p.m. at the Seattle Times Building. Dispose your hazardous household waste and see our website for more information. Okay, I have one proclamation. I'll come down and read it. So, the proclamation is in regards to Pride Month. LGBTQIA people are our family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, and provide meaningful contributions to our community each and every day. And whereas pride events are held in June to commemorate the June 28th, 1969 Stonewall riots that were sparked in response to ongoing harassment of New York's gay community and were also the catalyst for establishing safe places for gays and lesbians to be open about their sexual orientation without fear. And whereas equal protection of all people continues to be debated and discussed in legislative bodies and courts at the state and national level, and progress continues to be made toward protecting the rights of all people regardless of sexual orientation. And whereas the City of Bothell rejects discrimination based upon sexual orientation through its values, policies, and practices. And whereas the Bothell City Council has made diversity and inclusion a priority within its annual scorecard and supports the continued work of the city's Diversity and Inclusion Dive-In Committee to raise awareness and promote an inclusive work environment and community free from discrimination, now therefore I, Domena Dewar, Deputy Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim June 2019 as Pride Month in the City of Bothell. The city makes this proclamation to celebrate the LGBTQIA community and as an affirmation of the city's commitment to protect and serve everyone who resides in, works in, or visits Bothell without discrimination and of its belief in the dignity, equality, and civil rights of all people. Signed this day, the 4th day of June 2019. So, I think we have some friends, parents and friends of lesbian and gay community group to accept the proclamation. There we are. I recognize some of these friends. Would you like to say a few words?
If I can.
Absolutely.
That would be great.
Please.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Good to see you. So, hello. My name is Graham Guy, and I'm a resident of Bothell, and I'm the vice chair of PFLAG Bellevue Eastside. And we have a meeting location here in Bothell at the Bothell United Methodist Church, 3rd Mondays of the month, 6 o'clock, just in case anybody's wondering. I really want to thank you all, Deputy Mayor, members of council, for this proclamation. I understand that this is the first time that the City of Bothell has made such a proclamation, and this is really fantastic. It's important to us and to our families and to members of the LGBTQ community in Bothell and on the East Side. Although it's generally a fairly safe environment, not everywhere is. And public affirmations, proclamations such as this make a difference for our families and members of the LGBTQ community who wonder if they're safe in our communities. And this tells our families and members of the community that they are safe in Bothell. So, I want to thank you again for honoring Pride Month and wish you all a very happy Pride Month here in Bothell and beyond. Thank you very much.
Did you guys want a picture?
Could we? That'd be great.
Okay. So, you can go with the megaphone.
Oh, with the megaphone?
Yeah.
Up your hair. Yeah. I don't want to be just like them.
Okay. Chief Cummings.
Thank you so much, and good evening. And just come on up, guys. Stand right up next to me. So, I'm very happy to be able to introduce our first levy hire officers. And we've got, actually, we've got two additional. Michael Garcia, who is right now working on patrol in field training. So, he's on a call right now. So, hopefully, if his call gets done soon enough, he'll be back here and we can introduce him, too. But, so, for starters, I'd like to introduce Officer Camilo Lopez, right there, right in the middle. Hired in May, on May 20th, he was born in Chile and came to the United States when he was four. He attended Rutgers University and earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. And then he joined the Rutgers University Police Department in 2017. So, he is one of our lateral officers. Camilo is currently residing in Linwood. His hobbies are motorcycles. And so, for those of you that are enthusiasts, it is a Harley. And hiking, and then shooting sports, and his favorite food is prime rib. So, then we have also, also for our, another lateral police officer is Officer Matthew McCabe, hired on, right there, Matthew, hired June 3rd. He was born in Minnesota and attended the University of Minnesota in Duluth, earning his bachelor's in criminology. He moved to Washington, worked as a security guard prior to becoming an officer with the UW Police Department for four years. Matthew lives with his family in Issaquah. His hobbies are bird hunting and coaching soccer, and his favorite food is maple bacon doughnuts. I mean, really, that is such a stereotype, okay? So, and then, so, our new entry officer is Officer Jonathan Shoup, right there, purple tie. Hired June 3rd. Jonathan grew up in Seattle and graduated from Ballard High School, for any of you Ballard people. He received his bachelor's in history from the UW. He served six years in the USCG reserves at a marine science, as a marine science technician. He resides in Mercer Island, and his hobbies are fishing and soccer. I also just found out tonight that he's into slam poetry, so you can talk to him about that later. His captain wanted me to have him give an example of that right now, but I thought it'd be nice. And his favorite food is lasagna and squash. So, Officer Michael Garcia, who is currently on a call, he is, we hired him April 16th. He graduated from Montlake Terrace High School. He worked as a corrections officer in King County for eight years and was hired by Auburn PD, lateral to Bothell. And currently, he's in field training, like I said. He lives in Mill Creek, and his hobbies are camping, hiking, and motorcycles, and his favorite food is pizza. And finally, last but not least, Suki Monpreet, otherwise known as Suki Carr. She was born in Punjab, India, and moved to the U.S. when she was eight. She attended Kent Lake High School and graduated from UW with a degree in criminology, justice, and psychology.
Chief Cummings, they're here.
Oh. Hey, you made it! Timing is everything. Okay. So, Officer Michael Garcia and Suki Carr. So, so good. I'm glad you're here, Suki, because we did not get your favorite hobby. So, what is your favorite hobby?
Uh, playing basketball.
Playing basketball, okay. And we also didn't ask your favorite food, but I put your mom's because you talked to me about that. So, was I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, so her favorite food is her mom. So, she promises to bring some. So, with that, I want to introduce your new levy officers and to thank the City of Bothell for your confidence in your police department and your willingness to do this for us so that we can better serve you. So, thank you all.
And do you want a picture?
I would love a picture, yeah. Let's do that.
All right. Let's go up the top.
Yes. So... Thank you so much. I'd like to have you in the sitting. Yeah, that's good.
Wouldn't you want to be a part of it?
Yes, yes.
Thank you for being a part of it.
Thank you so much.
I don't even know where you live. Where do you, where do you come from?
I live in Edmonton.
In Rand?
Yes.
She just got married.
Yeah.
How many weeks ago?
A lot, you know.
Three months. And honestly, I had to say, you should see her wedding dress. It was the most beautiful thing I think I've ever seen. It really was.
So, was it traditional?
It was. It was totally, don't have any.
Okay, moving on. It's city manager and council committee reports. No city manager reports? Any council committee reports?
No.
No? Okay. Moving on to visitor comments. We have one sign up, Ryan McErven from UW Bothell regarding e-scooters.
Good evening. Ryan McErven here on behalf of the University of Washington, Bothell. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight on item 10A on your agenda regarding e-scooters. We are excited as a campus from the possibilities that e-scooters bring in terms of multimodal transportation that widen the avenues of possibilities for students to access campus and help them make that last mile. Obviously, as you know, parking on campus comes at a premium, so providing other alternative ways for them to access it, like transit, like bike share, and other alternatives for them to get there, is very important. So, we're excited as the city is considering potentially a 90-day pilot of the e-scooter program with Lime tonight. Certainly want to participate in that pilot in a productive way to make sure that while they do bring a new measure of access, they also present some potential public safety concerns that we're aware of, that are willing to work through, and are having those conversations on campus. So, we'll be sure to keep in communication with the city and with Lime to make sure that we learn everything we can from this pilot and are prepared to handle some of the challenges that may occur, such as parking, pedestrian safety. If we need to enact a geofence or some sort of slowdown zone or have them walked on campus, we are prepared to do that. We'll have those conversations and certainly be in touch with the cities going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, moving on to the consent agenda, two items have been pulled, AB 19-091 and AB 19-092. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Olson, seconded by Councilmember McNeil. Please place your votes. Maybe. Okay, here we go. Motion passes unanimously with Mayor Rayum absent and excused. Okay, so, moving on to AB 19-091, memorandum of understanding with Woodinville Fire and Rescue and Duval Fire, supporting a combined assistance grant for Blue Card Incident Command Training. Councilmember Zornz, you pulled this item.
I pulled this item as a, the city became, the community became very involved in public safety. And both of these items, I thought, would be of great interest for, to have a little more of a spotlight on them, because I think people think of fires, just putting out house fires. We got a great report that showed some statistics. I think I sat there with my calculator and found out that EMS responds to 300 times the number of calls for, are you timing me? Of house fires. And, and so my questions are, as a community, understand what's asked of our, our public safety people. So, the Blue Card system, I found very interesting from what we got in our agenda packet. And I was wondering if, and I understand that there's a grant that's, that several cities are going in on it. So, can you just tell us a little bit more about Blue Card? That's all I have on 19.
Sure. I can have Deputy Chief McDonald address that real quick.
Okay.
All right. Good evening. So, Blue Card, our, our goal was to provide some type of a certification process for our company officers, battalion chiefs, to have a certification that puts them in a position where we can look and say they have, they have the ability to manage a type four and type five fire incident. That would be all the way up to like a three-alarm-fire-type situation. This Blue Card certification comes from Phoenix. The Brunisini family, that used to be the, the fire chief of the Phoenix Fire Department, Al Brunisini, and his sons developed this program. It really comes to a communication style, a communication ability where we, on the fire scene. One of the major issues we have on fire scenes is breakdown in communication. We have to track our firefighters, track what's going on, make sure that if something were to happen, we know where everybody is at. This, this program follows the National Fire Protection Association 1021. It's the professional standards for fire officers and fire chief officers. So, by gaining and getting this training, we would, with, between Woodinville, Duval, and Bothell, we would see 48 company officers and chief officers obtain a certification in the Incident Command component of Blue Card. 75 hours in the first year of training for each individual. That is a great amount of training. It's essential that we maintain our training. And yes, we did apply, I wrote an AFG grants, assistance to firefighter grant for the three departments totaling $209,000. It is not an inexpensive program, but this would cover the costs of instructors, training, backfill, technology, and ongoing training for us. So, it would be significant, and I appreciate the council support and that of the departments. So, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Can I just have one follow-up comment? So, my impression, as you're describing this, is you're creating a, within our, within our fire team, very capable ability to put on a hat and, and network at a much more efficient speed that, that a crisis situation might require. And, and it sounds like more of our people would be able to do that. I mean, am I understanding?
Yes. Yes, ma'am, absolutely. We have very, very capable people right now. This just raises the bar. This is what we've tried to do over the last couple of years, is continue to raise the bar in the city and the region, and the, working collaboratively with Woodinville and Duval and other agencies that will be going to this. All of South King County currently uses the Blue Card program. I believe Kirkland, Eastside are moving to it also. So, it is a trend, and yes, it will absolutely impact and increase our effectiveness on fire scenes.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Would we like to pass it?
Yes. Yes, I was thinking, I think, do we want to do these separately? But no, you're right. I move that we approve the AB 19091. And I'm looking at the wrong documents, all right? Because I have questions for the next one. Thank you. Thank you. Memorandum of understanding with the Woodinville Fire and Rescue and Duval Fire, supporting a combined assistance grant for the Blue Card Incident Command Training.
Second.
Okay. Sorry. So, motion made to authorize the city manager to execute the MOU.
Thank you.
In substantially the same form as presented. Motion made by Councilmember Zornz, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. Please place your votes. Motion carries unanimously with Mayor Rayum absent and excused. Moving on to AB 19092. Councilmember Zornz.
Another quick question. It's just to help the community, and as, when we see that, when wildfires start, and we see that our guys are stepping on engines and heading off to wildfires, we take great pride that we're being part of fighting a very scary thing that other communities are facing. And, you know, chances are that Bothell will be called on that, if not this summer, another summer. So, my question to you is, help us understand, what's the typical thing that when our, when our crew gets on those fire engines and heads out of town, what, what would they typically be asked to, what kind of fires would they be asked to face in a wildfire situation?
Well, depends on who we're sending. But typically, when we send firefighters out of the city to do wildland, they have to be, what's called red-carded, which is specific wildland firefighting. It's a whole different operation than structural firefighting. They wear different clothes, they have different tactics, often different machinery they use. So, when they go off on these things, they're typically going out in, in the wilderness, in the wild, fighting uncontrolled fires or nearly uncontrolled fires versus what we do here is protect property. Occasionally, we will send them in a type-one engine, which is the engine you normally see going down the road. We, we sent them to Oregon and California, and they can, sometimes they do both. They'll, they'll go park the rig and then get on another brush rig or go off and fight hand-lined wildfires, or they may be sent to protect structures. So, they'd be using the gear that we normally use. But typically, when we send them off to do wildland fire, they are actually in, in the wildland, in the woods, using hand-lines and small tools to fight the fire.
Thank you. Thank you for answering that question, because I thought you were going off mostly to fight, to protect structures, and you guys are facing the giant. So, that, that's...
Yes. Typically, if we send firefighters in the state, it's usually out in, in the brush, doing wildland things. They help DNR, and, which is what this is for. And then, if we send them out of state, usually they go on an engine with, with the thought they could do either. They could do protect structures, or they could do wildland.
Okay. Thank you very much. Would you like to make me, me to make a motion?
Well, I thought I'd ask if anyone has any questions. But it looks like you're on.
No, no, sorry. I didn't, I didn't want to chew up a whole lot of time, but I thought what, these were very interesting topics that I thought were worth sharing. So, I move that we pass AB 19092, the inter-agency agreement with DNR for wildland deployment and reimbursement.
Second.
Okay. Motion made to approve the renewal of the inter-agency agreement with the Department of Natural Resources and direct the city manager to execute the agreement as presented. Motion made by Councilmember Zornz, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. Please place your votes. Motion passes unanimously with Mayor Rayum absent and excused. And we are now moving on to open the public hearing on the 2019 Shoreline Master Program update.
Thank you, and good evening. I just have a brief presentation, much like the presentation I gave for the study session last, last month, with a few updates before we jump into public testimony and deliberations. First thing, I would like to introduce, this is a joint public hearing with the Washington Department of Ecology, and I'd like to welcome Misty Blair, senior shoreline planner for the Department of Ecology, who has been working with us on this, this update. I also wanted to introduce Amy Sumi, senior biologist and permit specialist with Shannon Wilson, who's part of our consultant team that's been working on this with support from Department of Ecology. And also, we have three shorelines board members here tonight. David Cox, David Bain, and Sarah Gustafson are here and available to answer questions, as are Misty and Amy. So, with that, I just wanted to set the stage again. Part of this is a repeat, but for the public record here at the public hearing, this is all being done under the State Shoreline Management Act and following the Shoreline Master Program guidelines issued by Ecology, and which all feed into our Shoreline Master Program, our SMP, which we are updating with this, this action tonight. The update is being done under an optional joint review process authorized by the state, which is allowed for these types of scheduled periodic reviews, also by, by state code. So, that, just to summarize, the, the update includes changes to the Shoreline Master Program element of the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan, reflecting guidance from the Washington State Department of Ecology, and also some, some changes, just for clarification and ease of use. That also includes changes to, more substantive changes to the Bothell municipal code Title 13, Shoreline Management, also to reflect Ecology guidance. And we, it also includes changes to the shoreline jurisdiction and environmental, environmental designations to reflect changed conditions since the last Shoreline Master Program update in 2013. The shoreline jurisdiction includes 200, 200-foot buffer from the banks of waters of the state, which in Bothell are the Smamish River, North Creek, and we also have a portion of Swamp Creek in our, in our MUGA, our municipal urban growth area, our potential annexation area in Snohomish County, as shown on this diagram. It also includes associated wetlands and floodplains, which is why it expands in some areas along those, those streams. We have about 3.3 miles of the Smamish River within Bothell, Bothell city limits. The update is being done under an optional joint review process authorized by the state, which is allowed for these types of scheduled periodic reviews, also by state code. So just to summarize, the update includes changes to the Shoreline Master Program element of the Imagine Bothell Comprehensive Plan, reflecting guidance from the Washington State Department of Ecology, and also some changes, just for clarification and ease of use. It also includes changes to, more substantive changes, to the Bothell Municipal Code Title 13, Shoreline Management, also to reflect Ecology Guidance. And it also includes changes to the Shoreline Jurisdiction and environmental designations to reflect changed conditions since the last Shoreline Master Program update in 2013. The Shoreline Jurisdiction includes 200-foot buffer from the banks of waters of the state, which in Bothell are the Samamish River, North Creek, and we also have a portion of Swamp Creek in our MUGA, our municipal urban growth area, our potential annexation area in Snohomish County, as shown on this diagram. It also includes associated wetlands and floodplains, which is why it expands in some areas along those streams. We have about 3.3 miles of the Samamish River within Bothell City Limits or Bothell Planning Area, about 6.8 miles of North Creek, and about 3.3 miles as well of Swamp Creek within our planning area. In total, this area is about 6% of our total planning area, which is 18.1 square miles. The total planning area is 18.1 square miles. The process that we've gone through for this update, we had Shoreline Board meetings in November, December, January, February, March, and April. We held a public open house on March 11th, and a city council study session last month on May 14th, and then tonight's joint public hearing with Ecology. With this joint review process, we won't, council won't be able to adopt the plan tonight, or that's not the purpose of tonight's meeting, but we do ask for preliminary approval. Then with all the comments, with the comments that we've received to date, including any comments tonight, we will submit those and our responses to Ecology. They'll review the overall plan with these comments and get back to us. And we've scheduled a meeting for adoption on July 16th, assuming that can all happen by that point. The Comprehensive Plan Amendments reflects changes in the jurisdiction on the map, which the map that we saw two slides previous, and we're proposing to remove a flow chart that is in the regulations and thus redundant and isn't necessary in the Comprehensive Plan. The Shoreline Management Code Amendments are somewhat more substantial. They include, actually, I think I've gone double here, an update to definitions, references, and a habitat scoring system per Ecology Guidance. We've updated procedures for compensatory mitigation, and we've made minor amendments for clarity and ease of use. And the diagram there is also an added diagram showing the sequencing for any compensatory mitigation, which prioritizes onsite mitigation and then allows, under a very controlled and restrictive system of guidelines, other compensatory mitigation. The mapping changes, there were three main mapping changes reflecting new conditions, as well as a number of more minor ones reflecting new data, such as new wetland delineations along the shoreline. The first of the three more significant ones is Horse Creek, shown here. On the left is the current, are the current designations, and with the daylighting of Horse Creek through that area, the ordinary high-water mark for the Samamish River extends up that newly daylighted channel a distance, creating a somewhat larger shoreline, 200-foot shoreline jurisdiction area. That does extend onto our Lot A, which we've given a high-intensity designation so that there's minimal impact on the development of that. Otherwise, it extends the urban conservancy designation away from the park and the high-intensity park designation closer to the heart of the Park at Bothell Landing. The second change is to reflect the new Samamish River side channel that was constructed just across from the Park at Bothell Landing. That basically constitutes an extension of the bank of the Samamish River, requiring the 200-foot buffer from that point. That buffer extends, again, the urban conservancy environment, but it stays within the park land, extends past the West Riverside Trail, but that is in allowed use within that environment. And then the third larger change is at the Wayne Golf Course, the former Back Nine, where previously with the residential zoning there, the Shoreline Jurisdiction on that side of the river, it had a urban conservancy designation for the first 100 feet and a Shoreline Residential designation for the second 100 feet. With the purchase of that property, that Shoreline Residential designation is no longer needed. So that is all now urban conservancy. We did receive a question from council regarding what is urban conservancy, and the code identifies that in an area meant to protect and restore ecological functions of open space parks, floodplains, and floodways, and lands containing critical areas where they exist in an urban and developed settings while allowing a variety of compatible uses. So it's, the natural setting is intended for more pristine natural areas, where this is the more common designation in areas with parks or other less intensive urban uses. There was another question regarding flood hazards, and if I understood the intent of this question, it has to do with, well, Title 13 has numerous provisions relating to flood hazards, including a whole section on flood hazard reduction. And again, I've quoted a bit of that to avoid significantly or cumulatively increasing flood hazards, consistent with guidelines from other agencies that deal with flood hazards, including the Natural Resource Conservation Service, the Army Corps of Engineers, and FEMA, as well as King and Snohomish Counties. I got some further clarification that the question may have had to do with mapping of the flood areas, and we used to keep FEMA maps at the counter here. FEMA no longer provides the paper maps, so when we need to consult the FEMA mapping, we go to their website now, and that's available online. I also wanted to acknowledge that we've, during this 30-day joint comment period, we received a total of two comments so far. We may still receive some this evening, but those comments were circulated to you. The first was from Karen Walter of the Muckleshoots Indian Tribe Fisheries Department, and the second was from Dieter, I'm blanking on the last name, but a resident of our riverfront landing development alongside the river. And so the document that you received tonight includes those comments and our responses. And that document will go to Ecology, along with any other comments that we received tonight. So with that, I'd like to open it up for questions, and then we'll move on to opening the public hearing and receiving public testimony, then council deliberations, and ending in a motion and vote to preliminarily approve the recommended action with final adoption scheduled for July 16th. So with that, any questions? Oh, I did want, since this is a joint public hearing with Ecology, I did want to give Misty a chance to say anything if you needed to, or if you just want to be available for questions, that's fine, too.
Okay, who has questions? Councilmember Agnew.
This is for Ms. Blair. Do you have any concerns regarding this plan as it is right now?
So the way that this process works is that, once you guys have decided that you have the draft that you want, staff will submit it to me, and then I will give you guys a response in writing. It's called an initial determination. And if there are any recommended changes, then I will be presenting those to you with justification at that time. That being said, we have been working together, and the changes that you guys have proposed are fairly minor. So I wouldn't imagine any large earth-shaking comments to be coming from me.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? I have a question, actually. So we received comments from Karen Walter of the Muckshoots Indian Tribe, and our responses, we got in our folders tonight, but I haven't had a real chance to look over them. And so I wanted to ask if we made any adjustments, or are there any recommendations that came about because of her comments? Could you maybe summarize?
The comments were somewhat, I would characterize them as general, pointing out some of their longstanding policies and procedures. They didn't specify any specific changes that needed to be made, and we didn't feel that any, either of the comments that we've received to date require any changes to the Shoreline Master Program. The responses to Karen Walter's comments, her comments included a number of acronyms that you may not recognize, so in our responses, we did spell those out and identified, in some cases, specific sections of the code that do address those comments. Several of them had to do with the fact that even though the board spent a fair amount of time on the issue of compensatory mitigation and potential offsite mitigation, that is the last resort, and she was reinforcing that, that both the state and the tribes will be pushing for onsite mitigation, and our own staff onsite mitigation wherever that can be done. And the changes that we made to the compensatory mitigation really made it very restrictive. So even in those cases where it might happen, it's going to have to happen very close to the site or in a way that benefits the ecological function of our shorelines areas.
Great, thank you. So if we don't have any further questions, we can move on to public testimony, of which no one has signed up. Would anyone in the audience like to provide public testimony? Okay. So we can move on to council comments, council deliberations. Councilmember Zorn, you said you had a comment?
Well, just a few, this is, this is a very intense, small package, and I can see a lot of work and thought has gone into it. And thank you for answering our questions in your presentation. I guess my only request is, you know, we talk about last resort, and if our staff is looking at it, and our Shoreline Board has scrutinized it, and then through the state they're going to look at it, because last resort, I have to tell you from, you know, my human side, I'm like, okay, you say that's a last resort, but really, is it the last, last, last resort? So having it go through these filters of these eyes, everyone's eyes, gives me more confidence, yeah, that you're talking about what would really be the last resort, because ultimately, if it isn't the last resort, it's going to have an impact, the impacts of things that could have been done and weren't done. I may be dead and gone, but it would be a shame if we didn't circumvent situations and maximize our wetlands in a way that we could have. But I have every confidence that it's gone through the eyes and the filters, and state's going to look at it and say, yes, this genuinely, you are identifying what a last resort would be. So I'm just, you know, taking a deep breath. And thank you for everyone who's been a player on this, because you're protecting something very, very important to the staff and to our boards and to the state. Thank you.
Councilmember McCalliffe.
Thank you. I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank the Shoreline Board for all of your work. I see you have been meeting all through 2018 and into 2019, and I think your work that you have done certainly complements the teamwork that you have put into this, because I don't hear anybody testifying against anything. You all seem pretty satisfied with what we're hearing tonight. I do want to call out, though, that I appreciate the, you know, changes to New Horse, to New Horse Creek Channel, and really that the people appreciate what you've done over time with that, and it's a beautiful site now, and it's now going to the Samamish River. And also trying to look at what we're going to do with Wayne Land next in the Back Nine. So you have much work to be done, and I want to tell you how much I appreciate what you're all doing. Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, I just wanted to echo the complimentary remarks. I know it's taken a lot of time this year to do this work, and I particularly appreciate the work done in the in-loof fee mitigation section, because I think that's really important that we get that right and are thoughtful about how we go about doing that and when we employ it. And so particularly appreciative of that section. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we preliminarily approve the 2019 Shoreline Master Plan Update.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Councilmember McNeil. All in favor, please place your votes. Motion carries unanimously with Mayor Rayum absent and excused. Thank you, Shorelines Board.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. AB 19096 Motorized Foot Scooter Pilot Program.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Good evening, council. For the record, my name is Jeanie Ash, and I'm the Economic Development Manager for the city. And I am here to present to you for your consideration, a 90-day pilot program for electronic scooters. So, as you know, multimodal transportation for the purpose of reducing congestion and air pollution is very, very popular and has been invading our cities for the past year to 18 months. And as users of our public right-of-ways, it's incumbent upon us to permit them. So we don't have an existing permit in place. So part of this 90-day pilot is cobbling together policies from other cities and from the state, as well as using one of our existing permits, a public area use permit, to permit Lime scooters for a 90-day pilot program. The permit is, like I said, we're using the public area use permit, as you know, as for sidewalks, but what we're doing is we're amending it with language that directs Lime to enforce and/or to communicate with their end-users aspects of safety and where they can and cannot ride. And in your packet, you will see that it includes comments about they can't ride on the sidewalk on Main Street. That's part of our Bothell ordinance. They can't, they must wear helmets, and that during the duration of this pilot program, we will be provided with regular data from Lime with regards to usage, complaints, compliments, and we'll be collecting that. And that will be, there'll also be on our website, a link that will connect directly to Lime for people who have questions and/or complaints. Also, too, in order for this permit to be effective, they have to have insurance and sign an indemnifying agreement with the city. So in addition to your packet information, I wanted to provide you with some additional information with regards to some of the primary concerns that have been topics at many, many other city council meetings, and it's primarily safety and where you can and cannot ride. So because this is such a new program, there hasn't been a lot of research done. A variety of communities across the country... A variety of communities across the country have done some of their own research, like Portland and Santa Monica and Los Angeles. But the most comprehensive piece of research that I came across was actually done by the Center for Disease Control at the request of the city, of Austin, Texas. And I'd like to take a moment to read the results. And this is, this is to help you inform your discussion and to ask questions of Lime. So the results were that during an 87-day study period, 271 individuals were identified with potential e-scooter-related injury incidents. Of these, 58% participated in interviews and 130 confirmed having an e-scooter riding-related injury. Preliminary results indicate injured riders were 49% male, had a median age of 29 years, and 20% were hospitalized. Of the injuries reported, 45% were head injuries, 27% an upper extremity fracture, and 12% lower extremity. The majority of e-scooter injury incidents occurred in the street, 29% involved first-time riders, 18% involved motor vehicles, and less than 1% reported helmet use. Based on 130 confirmed injury incidents, the e-scooter-related injury incident rate was 14.3% per, 14.3 per 100,000 trips. So the other bit of information that I thought would be helpful for you would be, there's always questions about where they can and cannot ride. So the governor signed a new bill just this last April, and it goes into effect July 28th. And the bill establishes a regulatory framework for motorized foot scooters and motorized scooter-share companies. And the bill provides flexibility for local governments to regulate the operation of scooters within their jurisdiction. And I'd like to read you this, Section 3 of that bill. It states that, operation of a mop, it includes mopeds, so bear with me. "Operation of a moped electric personal-assisted mobility device or motorized foot scooter on a fully controlled limited access highway is unlawful. Operation of a moped on a sidewalk is unlawful. Operation of a motorized foot scooter or Class III electric-assisted bicycle on a sidewalk is unlawful unless there is no alternative for a motorized foot scooter or a Class III electric-assisted bicycle to travel over a sidewalk as part of a bicycle or pedestrian path." And then underlined, "or if authorized by local ordinance, as provided in Section 5 of this act." So as a city council, you are allowed to create your own ordinance for this. Couple other bits of information. Because our consultants who are working on the Canyon Park plan have suggested that e-scooters might be an option to release some of the congestion and get people from the bus transit out to the companies. I contacted the Business Association and asked if, what they thought about having e-scooters in their parks. And what they came back and said, "We'd like to wait until your 90-day pilot program is completed, and then we'll make a decision, have another conversation." I also went over and visited with McMinimans, because they're going to, they're going to be parked near. And because it's, I also see this as an opportunity for tourism, I think they're going to see a lot of usage over there. So I went over and talked to their general manager, and he expressed general support for the program, but also, too, expressed concerns about scooters on his property, cutting through his property, and his liability. And on a final note, because this is a personal note, because it amuses me. I think that councils, you know, I think that Bothell City Council is, history here is repeating itself with new technology. And I'd like to read you something I found from a little bit of research. In May of 1913, Bothell Mayor SF Woody was arrested for exceeding the 12 mile-per-hour speed limit on the bridge over the Sumamish River. In court, he argued that there was no instrumentation to accurately document his speed. The case was dismissed, but Woody was warned by the judge to observe the speed limit. So with that said, I would like to introduce Jonathan Hopkins from Lime, who is here to answer all of your questions.
Thank you. Good evening to the council. We'd just like to say it's very exciting to work through different options, to bring these sorts of mobility options to new communities. They serve a lot, about 20% of our riders connect to public transit on their last trip. 40% are doing dining or recreation or entertainment on their last trip. So in Tacoma, we know that about half of our rides happen in downtown and along the waterfront. Bothell has many of those same characteristics. And so there are many major opportunities here that I'm happy to talk through today.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Zorn's?
Just a quick question, and maybe Jeannie can answer this, or you will know this. So someone's driving, coming, scooting along from U of D of Bothell. Do they ride in the bike lane, and they want to come down to one of the businesses down here in Bothell? Do they ride in the bike lane till the bike lane runs out? And then do they move into the street and ride, since they cannot be on the sidewalk? Or do they, or do they hand-push it once they hit Main Street?
So this is part of council's decision. This is a pilot program. I am not making any recommendations. I would like to see how this plays out. And we can only know how to create these rules by having this 90-day pilot program. So I will finish by saying that if that's something that you want to incorporate into the 90-day pilot program, we will add it to the permit.
And then, and then my recommendation on this, based upon our experience in other communities, councilwoman, is that to make compliance easiest for our citizens, it's best to have as consistent of rules as possible. And to some degree, to a large degree, people have a pretty good understanding about how and where they're supposed to ride a bicycle. Most people know they're not supposed to ride a bicycle down the sidewalks on Main Street, so that they'll ride in the road. And so in general, our recommendation would be to have consistent rules between scooters and bicycles, except for, you know, rare circumstances where that's not a tenable situation. And so if we can make these most easily followed by our citizens, then compliance will be highest. And people who are in cars will have a better understanding of what to expect as well.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, we're trying to give scooter riders the vision to look at what cyclists are doing and kind of follow behind them. Okay.
Scooter riders prefer to ride in bike lanes. They prefer not to ride in sidewalks, although sometimes they will go to sidewalks if they feel unsafe anyplace else.
Right.
The streets, the road speeds on Main Street are very slow and generally. And so I think that people will feel comfortable generally riding in the street down there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McCullough.
So let me ask you this. Are there biking stations where they pick up and drop off? Or are they just, these scooters scattered throughout the community wherever they leave them?
Thanks, councilwoman. I think one of the ways, some of the promises of like the new free-floating shared mobility is that by saving the cost of having to invest in the stations and by making these more convenient to people, that companies could help provide a service to the community without the community having to pay for it. And so in Seattle, for example, the Pronto bike share system costs $3.5 million to install and cover about 20% of the city, and then $1.5 million to maintain, because those docks are expensive. And they also limit where these can go. So you'd have to walk five blocks to get a bike in some cases, and then you're taking a 10-block trip. So in this case, these would be free-floating. We do work with businesses. Some businesses will say, "I would love to have four of those really close to my business, because I know it creates foot traffic, and that will increase my business." And then sometimes there's other businesses say, "Please don't put us, you know, a typical deployment area near us." So we do listen to those businesses. And then what we do is every day, the scooters get redistributed. They get charged overnight by different members of the community, get paid to, they only get paid if they put them in a spot that's already been pre-allocated. And those scooter deployment areas are usually two to four scooters, maybe about once a block in denser areas. It might be in a residential area, once every couple of blocks, and a fewer number of them. And so they aren't in precise stations in some cases. Let's say we had an agreement with McMinimans, and they wanted them parked a certain area. Then we'd work with McMinimans, put up signs, put something in the app that encouraged people to park there and that sort of thing. So it's kind of like the, the short answer is, it's kind of like virtual stations, but people are able to kind of park them within certain rules, any space on the block, as long it's in the furniture zone, where you'd also find trees and streetlights.
So if I may, you can track where these scooters are? So if they're left someplace?
Yes, ma'am. We can, too, within the limits of GPS. So, you know, within 10 to 50 feet, yes.
And then one other thing, how many scooters are you going to actually deploy within that 90 days?
We are proposing, it's the same number as Everett right now, about 100 scooters, which I don't know have the precise number, but there's probably 20,000 to 30,000 cars in Bothell. So this is significantly less than the amount of cars that we see every day. In an effort to, within reason, test, is this a thing that works for the community? And is this a thing that pencils for the company?
And what is the pay scale for those that are monitoring these scooters? You said that you paid people to do this.
So we have an operations team that works full-time, checking scooters for, you know, if there's faults and everything else like that. I personally don't know their pay level, so I apologize for that. But the other piece of this is, in a way, instead of having our vans driving all over all the time and actually increasing congestion to reduce congestion, what we do is allow members of the community to take these home and charge them. And they get $4 to $20 per charge, depending on how low the battery was on the scooter. And so in much, granted, much larger cities of like Salt Lake City or Portland, we've paid out like a quarter million dollars into the community that goes directly into the community in four to six months. In Tacoma, it's tens of thousands of dollars since that was launched in September. And so, you know, sometimes you have retirees, they're picking up the one scooter that's on their block, they charge it, and, you know, maybe they donate the five bucks they make every day to their church. Other, other people, you know, go around and collect 10 every night and use it as a way to supplement their income, because they, they need that for some personal need.
So I have just one last request. I think that you should allow some of the city council members to have a demonstration. Not necessarily now.
Okay, yes.
But I think that it's very good that we actually experience it as well.
I mean, we did bring one, but yeah, I am joking on that one point. But we are very happy at any time, at the council's discretion, to provide this or these for them to ride around. And we've done this, we were talking to the police officers outside just before this in Ogden, and we provided four of them to the police department. And they rode them around, figured out how they work, and then did safety and social media videos to help, help the community do it right. And so that was really exciting.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Are helmets required?
Helmets in King County are required by law. We, in all our communities, strongly recommend and remind people of what the law is. We haven't found a way to make helmets come with the scooter in a way that people will use it. Bike share systems around the world have had that same challenge. So in King County, helmets are required by law, and we inform the users of what the law is and remind them over and over. We've also included, like we have a $3 million safety campaign to remind people of this sort of thing. Also, soon, we'll be launching some rider training programs that also reemphasize these tools and hand out free helmets as, in, as part of that program.
Councilmember, if I can just add one note. They're not required by law in Snohomish County. Is that correct?
And then what's the maximum speed?
The maximum speed on our scooters is governed, the assisted speed at 15 miles per hour.
Right.
And then the average speed that people use a scooter is within about a half a mile an hour of the average speed on a bicycle. And then there's some other measures where it's about a half mile an hour difference for slow riders and fast riders. It's very similar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So the statistics on the injuries that happened, do you have a bike versus scooter averages?
Councilmember, I think that's a really good question. The best data that we can point to that looks at both a bike, because the CDC study did not look at bike exposure rates, is from Multnomah County Health Department in Portland, where they took injuries as recorded in hospitals throughout the region that, you know, said anything that indicated it might have been on a scooter. And then they compared that to bike rates. They weren't able to do an exact apples-to-apples comparison, but what they're able to surmise is they could not find, you know, a very divergent difference in rates. And then they said, quote, you know, "Based on this and the other positive effects, we see no reason why a pilot should not continue in the city of Portland." So they can't say that it's equal. They can say it's not wildly divergent from the injury rates on bicycles. And then in the city of Salt Lake City, instead of using hospital data, they looked at police reports. So when people have a more extreme interaction, it probably gets reported to the police. And they found out, but per month, on average, there were eight pedestrian-reported incidences, seven bike-reported incidences, and eight scooter-reported incidences, which does not, which seems to imply some degree of parity with the other types of non-vehic, non, you know, big-vehicle transportation on the road. That's the best data that we, we have to compare apples to apples at this time.
Okay. And the incidents that happen, is there statistically, is there a way to show where they're happening? Like what type of environment that they're in? Busy roads, side streets? I mean, I'm trying to gauge, like, if it's on a, you know, 522 or 527, what is, are the incident rates going to go up? Or if it's only in downtown? You said people are going to be taking these home. So on side streets, where are you finding most of the incidents or injuries are happening?
Councilmember, I'm trying to think of the different studies that we've had. I think for the most part, to get to that level of detail, it would require more history. So the CDC and Multnomah County were two of the more, like, detailed reports. And at this time, I don't think that they, I don't think I've seen that type of information, because I believe that they would want a larger sample size across multiple cities to do that. So I could be wrong, but to the best of my knowledge, that information of like, has not been collected. But however, I think maybe a better answer is, we can double-check and follow-up to see if it is in the CDC report. To my knowledge, there's not like one type of urban context that has like a really acute rate of injury compared to others. Most of, for us, most of the most serious incidences have involved interactions with cars, which is consistent to what is experienced by bicyclists and pedestrians. And, you know, people aren't going to try and ride these a lot next to the highway, I do not think, because it's not, and just like, people don't walk along the highway really close. It's just not an enjoyable experience.
Okay. And then do you see the pilot programs that you've already done, are these mainly located near businesses and go from business to business? Or are they business? Because you mentioned people are going to take them home and charge them. And so I'm trying to, like, if I'm downtown at McMinimans, I'm going to take this thing to my house, and then I'm going to bring it back. And at some point, I'm going to be on a highway somewhere in order to do that, or I'm going to go on a trail. And do you see these things being able to be used on the Burke-Gilman Trail, as an example?
Councilmember, the, the average distance, so the usage varies a little bit city by city, based on how the cities are set up. But the average trip distance is between one to two miles. And so these are used a lot to connect pieces of somebody's daily life. When people are taking it home to charge it, that's after the scooter's been worn out, you know, not worn out, but the battery's, you know, low for the day. Then somebody will pick it up. Most, our data shows that about 30% of people are using scooters for commuting purpose, but that doesn't mean that they're using it for the entire commute. We know that 20% of people report their last trip was to connect to public transit. That might be or might not be for commuting purpose. And then 40% are for dining or entertainment. And that 40% is probably somehow connected to downtown or some other business center where there's restaurants or shopping. So, so about 40%, I would expect there. Our Tacoma data reinforces that, 48% of trips again are downtown or along Ruston Way. So that, most of that is a dining or entertainment experience, you know, plus some commuting.
So...
And then on the Burke-Gilman Trail piece, did we clarify, like, these, these are allowed on Burke-Gilman Trail currently, or is that, I don't know if we clarified that?
Nick, is the Trail County?
Yes.
Yes, it's allowed.
Right. And I would expect there'd be some uses on the Burke-Gilman Trail, yes. And I would expect there'd be some uses on the Burt Gilman Trail, yes.
So just so I'm clear, you can have a motorized electric scooter on Burt Gilman Trail?
Yes.
Just, just like you can have a motorized e-bike on the Burt Gilman Trail, and they would go, the e-bikes would actually go faster because they're not governed.
Okay. The indemnity piece for the city, can you speak to that a little bit?
Lime typically indemnifies cities against all fault that's not the city's to help protect the city. To, there's not situations where, like, everybody is accountable for any sort of certain actions. Like if a city garbage truck hits somebody on a scooter, that's, like, we wouldn't indemnify that, but we indemnify against other, other aspects. And so what's been proposed here is indemnity similar to what the city of Seattle has.
Okay, which means that if we say it's okay to do the pilot program, somebody goes out and gets seriously injured, we're not held liable for that because we have the pilot program in place. Is that correct?
I'm not, I don't think I'm qualified to answer that because I'm not a lawyer, but if, yeah, basically, it's, you know, if the city did something extraordinarily negligent that resulted in somebody's injury, having a pilot program is not extraordinarily negligent. But if something extraordinarily negligent, like they build a bridge poorly, and then the, the bridge fell down of its own accord, then, then that would be something that somebody could sue for. But, you know, if somebody was doing scooter jumps off of a wall, they couldn't sue the city for that. It's my understanding, but I'm not a lawyer, so I, I'm not practicing law right now.
Okay. And then I see a pretty positive connection between the UW and, and helping students get into downtown and visit our businesses and things like that. Is that, is that kind of where, where this is kind of going to start? Is that kind of how you guys see this pilot working?
Councilmember, we consider that a very key node, and that's why we've met with UW, and we've met with transit agencies. And there's transit agencies, including some in our region, that are working on, okay, how do we integrate this well? Because again, 20% of those trips are connecting to public transit. And in our view, if public transit usage is up, the community wins. And then if people are riding our scooters more, they don't take up much space, and it's all clean electricity that's powering them. That's also community win for many of the same reasons. So we think the UW is a key node that will see benefits, and I, I think they're excitedly exploring this.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm excited about the program. I just, my concern is safety first and foremost, and if we're going to have young people on the scooters, it's making sure that we keep them safe as well as other members of our community. I'm excited to see it. I just want to make sure we look at that, that safety as a top priority.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Olson.
Thank you. So can there be geo-fencing or anything to slow down scooters in certain areas? I know, you know, McMenamins got brought up as, you know, within their parking lot or on their property. Is it possible to have areas like that?
Councilmember, it is possible to have areas like that. There are limits to the situations that can be applied to based on the limits of like GPS accuracy. So in, in the circumstances where that's the most appropriate answer, then we work with communities to, to rule that out.
So maybe not just a question for you, but what is the current city ordinance for bicycles on sidewalks?
I'm not sure if we currently have a city-specific ordinance. It's a little bit complicated. You're not allowed to ride a bicycle in a business district, and a business district is based on density and distance from certain areas. So it's not, it's somewhat difficult to clearly define. Look, we have a downtown core area and there are boundaries. It goes a little beyond that, but it's not well-defined right now. We would need the assistance of GIS to map that out as to where the business districts are in the city. It would be illegal to ride the bicycles on the sidewalks in those areas, but legal otherwise in the rest of the city.
Thanks for that clear answer.
Yeah, no. It's not clear at this point.
So I was just asking, because your recommendation is to have it the same as our bike ordinance, and so we have a complicated ordinance. But I think, I mean, these generally have smaller profiles, and, I mean, I've ridden, not the Lime ones, but I've ridden electric scooters before, and I think they have, you know, a smaller profile. I mean, my shoulders are wider than this, so I'm riding along, you know, I have to be more wary of my body than this scooter. And so I think you just have to be mindful and, you know, respectful as you're riding it. So I mean, I would think if it's not prohibited from anywhere, I think, you know, sidewalk riding is great and people just use common sense and, I mean, just like anything. And I mean, these, the scooters are as dangerous as bicycles or anything else, so, you know, I don't see them as inherently danger risks. And like I said, I've ridden them, electric scooters. I think they're great. They're really great for that, you know, last mile connection. When we had the Lime bikes, I used to park in the city garage and take it down to the park and ride on 522. It was just a great little last connection. And so, so yeah, so I'm, I'm in favor of them. I'm excited to have them in the city. I've seen them, you know, pop up in Everett and, you know, already saw a couple people riding on them. So I think it'd be great for UW Bothell to get into downtown or, you know, just around. So looking forward to it.
Thanks, Councilmember.
Okay, last but not least, I hope. Great points brought up by everybody. Most of my questions have been answered. Are there speedometers on those?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, they are. So unlike the mayor back in 1913, the current mayor would have no excuse. So, yeah, they're, they're down, and it's to the 10th of mile an hour as well, so.
And you said maximum speed is 15 miles per hour, as in it cannot go faster than 15 miles per hour?
Deputy Mayor, the maximum assisted speed is 15 miles an hour. If there is a downhill, they can go slightly above that.
Is there automatic braking for going downhill?
There currently is not, no, ma'am.
Hmm, important to note, okay. I have problems with brakes. I guess the reason I ask is because although they can go 15 miles per hour, I know that on the trail, when a bike's going 15 miles per hour, it's not entirely comfortable if you're walking and they pass you at that speed. And so I guess I would be in favor of considering a maximum speed in the city that's not 15 miles per hour. And I think if it were slower, I would be more in favor of letting them ride on the sidewalk, because I know myself, if I wanted to go out with my kids, I would feel a lot safer on a sidewalk, even if I could only go five miles per hour than be forced into the road and going 10 miles per hour. So I, I don't know how that works. I'm just throwing ideas out there.
I've been studying this a lot. And you, and you can probably answer this. Is there, isn't there a, it's not cost efficient if, once you get a certain, below a certain speed?
There will be a drop-off in utilization as the speed decreases.
Because five miles per hour is slower than a walk.
Right, right. And so we just recommend if there's a slow, like, almost universally, there's some states that allow 20 miles an hour on their scooters. We, we limit ours at 15. But overwhelmingly nationwide, the, the speed limit is 15 miles an hour citywide. There might be occasionally be areas of increased concern that, where something is just much more targeted than that. But we, if we want these to achieve the purpose of getting people out of their cars, so 30% of the riders of scooters say they would have been driving or in an Uber or Lyft. And so if we want that to happen and make sure that it pencils in the community so that, you know, should the city want it to continue, that it could continue, that, you know, companies would agree to continue it, I would recommend that if there's a slowdown area, that it be used sparingly so that people can, can make best use, and it achieves the goals that we're trying to achieve related to climate and congestion.
Right. And I guess that's, that was put better than, than I did, because I, I guess I was mulling the idea of yes, letting them be used on the sidewalk in the business district and having a lower speed limit within that area. That was just something that crossed my mind. And then Councilmember McNeil asked my questions about the indemnity agreement. I actually, there was a very fortuitous podcast, The Overcast from the Seattle Times, that spoke, spoke in-depth about this issue and how Seattle was dealing with it. So it kind of gave me a heads up as far as what some of their issues were, and, and those have all been addressed. So I'm not sure where we go from here. Are we just approving as is or rocking out to someone's phone?
My, my request, Deputy Mayor, is that we approve this permit with the, with all of the requirements as it is, and then we test it.
Test it? I think you're right. I think some things you can't know until you just try it out.
We'll be, you know, tracking it, and we'll be collecting data, and I'm sure there will be a lot of community feedback. Hence the link on our website directly to Lime. So again, my request is that you approve this 90-day permit.
Okay. Just real quickly, I want to speak in support. I think it's a little scary. It's kind of going out on a limb, but I think this is the future, and I think we're wise to just, just try it out and give it a, give it a spin. So I will entertain a motion.
I would so move that we permit the 90-day program of motorized foot scooters and return to council for action within 90 days.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember McAuliffe and seconded by Councilmember Olson to agree to a 90-day motorized foot scooter pilot program. This item will return to council for action within 90 days. Please place your votes.
Deputy Mayor, can I speak to the motion?
Absolutely, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So I will, I will be supporting the motion cautiously. I still have some concerns about the safety. And if at all possible, I would hope that if there's, there's issues within our community or safety concerns, that we are notified right away so that we at least know how the program is actually working. So, but I will, I will be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Agnew.
I too will be supporting the motion. I think 90 days will give us a little bit of an idea. I don't think, I go on the trail a lot, and I don't think motorized vehicles are allowed on the Burt Gilman Trail at this point in time. I may be wrong, but, but I seem to remember those signs saying, "No motorized vehicles." But I think the 90 days is going to tell us a lot. We're going to get a good idea of what's going on here.
Councilmember Zornz.
Well, I'm looking forward to personally giving it a spin. And, and I will be supporting it as well. The one comment that I wanted to make is that, sorry, UofD Bothell person's still here. Thank you for coming in, giving testimony. I have anecdotal opinions coming from a daughter who's at Maine campus, and she has said that Maine campus has had to work through some kinks and hitches on this. So I have every confidence that UofD Bothell is asking the right questions to help make this a, a success. So I'm looking forward to seeing, see how it, how it develops. So thank you.
Councilmember Wilson, do you have comments?
I think I've already made my position clear that I'm in favor of this, but, yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming and speaking with us. I look forward to the feedback. Okay, please place your votes. Motion carries unanimously with Mayor Rayum absent and excused.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to council conversations. Always that awkward time when someone decides they have something to say or not. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a short report on the Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce meeting, which was last week, where I was very impressed with the Park and Recreation Director Nick Stroop and Tracy Pekowski, who presented the survey for PROS Plan. And I really wanted to bring this up because I think it's important that the public responds to this survey, so they can go to the city of Bothell website to PROS and then take the survey. And it is really important for Parks, Recreation, and Open Space to make this plan over the next six years, and it's, helps us have some grant money as well. So I hope the public will do that. But thank you for a great presentation at the Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce.
Can I ask, are we do, are we doing outreach to various organizations? I know we talked about wanting to do outreach to youth and get the youth more involved.
We're, we're coming to you, there's going to be a great deal of outreach for the PROS Plan, and Parks and Rec is coming to you at the next council meeting, at the study session on June 11th, with a significant presentation, including the consultant who will walk you through all of that.
Fabulous. I should have known you were 10 steps ahead of us.
I've already released it to you.
Oh, yeah, okay. Any, any other comments? Councilmember Agnew.
I just want to thank some of the council members that were at the dedication that we had at Pop Kenny Field for some of the Bothell High graduates that gave the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our country. I saw a number of you there, and I appreciate it. And also the city manager, and I just want to tell you that I appreciate it, along with I'm sure a bunch of other old guys that were in the service.
It was a very moving ceremony. I had a lot of dust in my eyes that day. Yeah, it was very meaningful. Councilmember Zornz.
Yes, that Memorial Day dedication was, I think, you can't live in this country long without having some skin in the game of having a family or family members invest in protecting our, our freedoms. And to recognize that locally is, this is family. So, yes. There's another little drum that I have been pounding on a personal level, and I wanted to just put it out for council. I don't think the city is anywhere at the point of making this a big production, but we have had, in my own personal yard, I have noticed the pollinator decline, and now it's starting to come, climb back up. I'm a big fan of the little bumblebees. They're not honeybees. But King County has a program for promoting healthy pollinators, and healthy pollinators are not just bees. We've got hummingbirds and butterflies. And I would like to see on some level, a growing awareness within the Bothell community for promoting healthy pollinating gardens. UofD Bothell has planted another pollinating garden, which is very, very cool. But the more that we, each city, and there are bee pollinating cities who promote the people of that city to have either gardens that are, have broad blooming, seasonal blooms, or people who have apartments and have flower pots on their porch. Anything to support healthy pollinators protects not only our flora and fauna, but ultimately the, the food that we eat down the road. So it's a big ripple effect. And I, I've been doing homework on it, and I would like to see, you know, as a city, when we have an opportunity to encourage healthy pollinating, we do that.
I think that's a great idea. I would totally support that. Short of having a hive in my yard, that I might, I might not do. I wanted to also let everyone know next week, or I guess last council meeting, we had a young lady come from Inglemore and ask us to attend the Sustainability Summit at, at Inglemore next, I think it's Wednesday. And I just wanted to let you all know that I'll be there with some of the city staff and invite you also, if you're interested, we'll be giving a presentation on what the city is doing with our sustainability goals. So it should be fun. Anything else? Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First, I'd like to say a special thank you to the city manager, Councilmember Agnew, and Councilmember Olson for all the hard work and dedication that they're applying towards the NPRSA, which we know is all near and dear to all of us here, our senior center, being that it serves 62% of the seniors in this area that are low-income. So we're working hard. It's a long battle. We have a lot of work to do. The facility has a lot of issues. It's aging significantly and quickly, and we need to, to work hard to get funding to ensure that that, that facility stays open. So we're working on that. I want to talk a little bit about the Wayne Golf Course, which is, which is near and dear to our community. There's a lot of comments that have been made. There's a lot of comments that have been made in the, recently here about the condition of Wayne. And I want everybody to know that I, I think we're doing what we need to do to maintain the property and, and giving access to mowing of trails and things like that along the back nine. Something that was, was very special that I just recently noticed is there's a lot of wildlife now that is starting to show up on the back nine of the Wayne Golf Course. Even with the activity of cutting down the trees that were a risk to our community, the apple orchard that unfortunately during the last snowstorm didn't make it. That was a downside to the snowstorm. The positive side to the snowstorm was the hundreds of kids that were out enjoying the front nine of the Wayne Golf Course. So, while we may have some things that, that maybe seem a little negative, there's a lot of positive things going on. I know that upcoming, we're gonna hear about the PROS Plan, things like that that are coming, parks and open space, which I know are near and dear to all of us in perpetuity for our community. I just wanted everybody to know that I know that the city is working very hard to maintain this land so that we make sure that our community can get out. Councilmember Agnew informed me this afternoon that, in fact, the front nine was just mowed. And look forward to getting out there and having a barbecue this weekend. So, great things are happening. So, super, super happy and thank the, the city for taking care of that. On another note, I had one more thing that I wanted to talk about. And this one is treatment. And I think, I want to say, I, it's, it's been an honor to serve with all of you here. And it's gonna continue to be an honor. And I want to make sure that, that we all know why we're all here, and that we're here on behalf of our community. And I respect each and every one of you. And unfortunately, I've, I've seen another side of, of being an elected official. And it wasn't a pleasant side. But I want you to all know that, to me, relationships and why we sit here and the things that we do, we're family. And we all live within the same community. And I think it's important that we have open conversations on time to time on how we feel about things, but we keep it respectful. The city manager sent out an email today about the things that we do internally in our city, and looking out for, for staff, and making sure that people don't feel like they're being bullied and things like that. And I, and I think, to me, coming from an African-American male perspective, I feel welcome here. And I think it's important that we, in today's time, when we're going through an election coming up, that we all stay positive. We all have a voice here. We all need to be able to have a voice, and we all need to listen to one another. And so I just wanted to say a couple words about that because I think it's important that we, we all stay true to who we are and what we're here to do. So I just wanted to thank you for the time to, to say that tonight because it's important, and I felt like I had to say something. So, thank you.
I'm actually not in charge. This is council conversation, so just jump right in.
Well, speaking of the NPRSA, I, I heard that there's a little soiree going on down there around July 4th, where they're having food trucks and music and bouncy houses. So everybody that's out there after the parade, slide on down to the senior center for a little bit more entertainment.
I heard there's gonna be a pie-eating contest.
I heard that too, and you're invited.
I'm not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna compete the heck with being invited.
Well, I'm gonna win.
You're on. I, I wanted to say that I, I haven't been involved with the NPRSA, but I've heard really great things about the work that you guys are doing. It's tough work. There's no easy solution. And I appreciate your, your fortitude and your stick-to-it-iveness because it's, it's important. So, thank you. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. And I guess I'll jump back in because, as you were thanking people, I wanted to thank our city manager, Jennifer Phillips, and our assistant city manager, Kelly, I'm sorry, Ma, it's only, I got it. I almost had it. For coming to our, oh, and Councilmember McNeil, for coming to our task force when we met on Bothell Youth Council to kind of listen to the students. And they testified from Kirkland, Kirkland Youth Council. And I want to bring this to, before you at the next meeting, kind of a proposal I have. But I just want to say, I want you to hear the youth before I do this. And so I'm planning on, on doing that before I actually bring something before you. And I also want to announce that on July 5th, our first Bothell Friday Market will open at the Villas at Beardsley, which is up across the street from the University of Washington and Cascadia. It will be from 3:00 to 8:00 every Friday night with arts and music and vegetables to be bought. And we're really excited to bring this to you. It's been a huge effort by about five committee members. But I appreciate the fact that the city tried to help us get here toward Main Street. But that didn't work this year because it's, we just don't have that kind of money for the first year. So John Howey from the Beardsley Cafe offered to host us. And we can afford to do that. So we'll open, grand opening, July 5th, ribbon cutting, and you'll all be invited. We're pretty excited.
That's a huge community win, and that's, that's on you, Rosemary. Thank you very much for that, those efforts.
You're fine.
That's, that's, yeah, yeah. I, I know. So, anything else anyone wants to talk about? All right. I guess we will excuse ourselves for executive session. And it looks like we need, well, let's see, 30, 30 minutes plus another five. So 35 minutes. Somebody add it up for me. 8:10 will be, we should be adjourning at 8:10. All right. Thank you, and good night.